If you so choose, please stand with me and remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
Thank you for the invitation to be here. Let us pray. Lord, during a time when it seems there's a new challenge around every corner, we call on you to be our steady hand. Through sickness and storms and elections, you have led your people in times past to be faithful and to follow your light. We trust in your faithfulness, God, to lighten our path and nourish us along the way. During challenging times, though, sometimes we are tempted to emphasize our disagreements and dividing lines than we are to notice places of agreement. So help us, Lord, to be a witness to our community and our nation of togetherness and of seeking the common good for all. When the rest of the world seems to be losing their heads, give our city leaders a calm and constructive spirit. Give us a vision for holding fast to our convictions while finding ways to work together. Help us to show grace to each other, give each other the benefit of the doubt, and assume the best and not the worst of one another. Lord, bless these public servants who have given their lives, their time, their energies for our service. Bless them with wisdom, discipline, discernment, courage, to always do what is right. Lord, when they're low, give them energy. Be the wind at their back, and when they need an extra boost, give them time of rest in you. For these things we ask in your one true and holy name. Amen.
Amen. Please join in the pledge to our nation's flag.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. May we have the roll call, please.
Mayor Ames.
Here.
Mayor President Phil Schott.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
Mayor President Whitaker.
Present.
We do have three proclamations today, getting back to normal, hopefully. Our first one will be delivered, please, by Councilmember Mouton.
Thank you, ma'am. Good afternoon. I have the pleasure of reading the proclamation for the White King Awareness Day, National Federation of the Blind of Texas Golden Triangle. Whereas the white cane which every blind citizen of our city has the right to carry, demonstrate, and symbolize the ability to achieve a full and independent life and the capability to work productively in competitive employment. Whereas the white cane by allowing every blind person to move freely and safely from place to place makes it possible for the blind to fully participate in the contribution to our society and to live the lives they want. Whereas every citizen should be aware that the law requires that motorists and cyclists exercise appropriate caution in approaching a blind person carrying a white cane. Whereas Texas law also calls upon employers, both public and private, to be aware and utilize the employment skills of our blind citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capabilities. Whereas the state of Texas, though its public agencies and with the corporate assistance of the National Federation of the Blind of Texas Golden Triangle Chapter can and should facilitate the expansion of employment opportunities for and greater acceptance of blind persons in the competitive labor market. Now, therefore, Mayor Becky Ames of the City of Beaumont do hereby proclaim Thursday, October the 15th, 2020, as White cane Awareness Day. In Beaumont, and do call upon our schools, colleges, universities, to offer full opportunities to training to blind persons, upon employers, and the public to utilize the available skills of competent blind persons and to open a new opportunity for the blind in our rapid-changing society. And upon all citizens to recognize the white cane as a tool of independence for blind pedestrians on our streets and highways. Accordingly, the mayor has herein to set her hand and cause the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed this day, October 13th, 2020. Signed, Mayor Becky Ames. And Jeanetta Price is the president. She will be accepting this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Please feel free to say a few words.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you, Mayor Ames, for signing our proclamation. And also, I would like to just acknowledge Council Mouton, because not only does she say she supports the blind, she shows up. So I just want to just say thank you for your participation in our endeavors. October 15th is National White cane Safety Day. I am the president of the National Federation of the Blind Golden Triangle Chapter. So this year, we will be conducting our White cane intersection crossing in Port Arthur, Texas, intersection Dryden and Twin City. And I also want to thank the Port Arthur Police Department as well. And as always, Beaumont Police Department always participates, but this year, we're just spreading it around the Golden Triangle. So thank you, guys. I appreciate your time.
Ms. Price?
Yes.
Give him your testimony.
Oh, most definitely. Okay, I cannot stand up. Thank you. I am legally blind. However, three years ago, I received a special contact from Baylor College of Medicine where I can see 20-40-ish in my right eye. And I was able to, it was covered on the news as well. I was able to purchase a car and also renew my driver's license. I want to leave with you guys that it took for me to lose sight to gain vision, and once I gained vision, God allowed me to see better. So I just want you guys to just focus in on your vision, not the limited disability. Because I tell people, I was a blind woman going through college. It took, I told people, when I went to college, I couldn't pass when I had 20-20, but it took for me to lose sight to walk in my purpose. So I just pray and just thank the community for all the support and love. And at the end of the day, we of the blind, the community, we're fighting for equality and opportunity for all. So thank you, guys, again, and thank you, Council Mouton.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you coming today. And I did ask Councilmember Mouton to read the proclamation, because I know that she's been very supportive of you guys and gone out and walked with y'all. So thank you, Councilmember Mouton. Our next proclamation will be delivered by Councilman Page.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the nation's 167,000 or more emergency nurses are the first line of care in emergency department. They are the expertise in caring for all the emergency patients across the spectrum of the lifespan, ushering life in at birth and allowing for a dignified death. Emergency nurses have showed their true dedication to their calling in one of the most challenging years in modern history. They've done that by treating in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas emergency nurses are committed to providing quality emergency care to their patients, emergency nurses continually demonstrate their professionalism and strive to upgrade standards of practice and improve patient care. And whereas emergency nurses are often the first medical professionals to provide treatment and comfort to victims in major disasters, frequently sacrificing time with their own families to aid the most needy. These amazing men and women have shown their true grit in 2020, the year of the nurse, by overcoming and adapting daily to every changing course of the modern influenza of COVID-19 pandemic. With grace, they've done it with grace, flexibility, determination, and often at great risk to their own lives and the lives of loved ones. Whereas emergency nurses educate the public in the prevention and treatment of injury and illness and the proper use of emergency services, emergency nurses risk injury exposure to communicable diseases and face potentially violent situations while aiding the sick or injured. And whereas the Golden Triangle Emergency Nurses Association will be hosting a virtual premiere party of the newest and exciting documentary produced by Carolyn Jones. It's entitled "In Case of Emergency," on October the 14th, Emergency Nurses Day, at 7:00 PM Central Time. This follows the laughs and tams of emergency nurses in the United States and includes footage from the COVID-19 pandemic. And now, therefore, Becky Ames, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, does hereby proclaim October the 11th through the 17th as Emergency Nurses Week. Here in, she's right here in Beaumont, and we encourage all the citizens to recognize and thank all local nurses for their incredibly difficult job and positive impact they make on our community. Accordingly, the mayor is herein to set her hand and cause the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed October 13th. And I would like to call forward Santana Olivera, President of the Golden Triangle Emergency Nurses, to accept this proclamation.
Please feel free to say a few words.
Hello, and this is my immediate past president. This is Rae. Let me pull up here. First of all, thank you, Mayor Ames, Beaumont City Council members, and to the citizens of Beaumont for signing, for you for signing this proclamation for us this week. On behalf of myself, the Golden Triangle E&amp;A Board of Directors and our membership, thank you for this honor and recognition while we celebrate Emergency Nurses Week, which is this week. October 14th is Emergency Nurses Day, so this is, especially in the year 2020, this is very dear, near and dear to our hearts, so thank you so much for that. I couldn't be more excited to celebrate the incredible individuals who have committed themselves to working in the wildest place in the hospital, the emergency department. It takes a certain kind of human to dive into the ER, and an even more unique individual to stay. And we have, in our tenure amongst our ranks and membership, we have nurses with over 30, 35 years of experience, as well as new grads with less than a year. So definitely, when you're in it for 30 years. They have asked, they have been asked to do the impossible this year, yet they show up every day. I cannot tell you how proud I am of each of them, and thank you for joining me in the trenches each shift. You are truly my family. May we take this week to honor each of them. They are our neighbors, our family members, our colleagues, and our citizens. May we also not forget those who have been lost to COVID-19 this year. Other than that, I want to thank you, guys, so much for all this. So we really do appreciate y'all more than you know. So if you can, make sure you shake your hands to your nurses, make sure you're doing all your things. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rae. I'm the past president of Golden Triangle E&amp;A, and I'm currently the secretary. We recycle around. Thank you so much for doing this at the most appropriate time, where, you know, this is the nurse of the, the year of the nurse, and of course, it is also the Emergency Nurses Week. So.
We thank you, and we appreciate all you do, and I know that it's a lot, and especially in these days. So thank y'all so much, and please give our thanks to all of your associates. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys, so much. You're welcome.
Okay, the next proclamation I'd like to deliver, I've been talking about this for the last few weeks, I think, because I think it's such a great event that's put on by our Chamber of Commerce. Whereas Lemonade Day is a free, fun program dedicated to teaching children how to start, own, and operate their own business through the simple and time-honored act of building and running a lemonade stand. And whereas the Greater Beaumont Chamber of Commerce, in partnership with the Beaumont Independent School District, ExxonMobil, and Howell Furniture, along with many other companies and organizations, joined forces to bring this innovative program to Beaumont. And whereas children participating in the Lemonade Day program are encouraged to spend a little, save a little, and share a little by donating a portion of their profits to local charity of their choice. And whereas Lemonade Day is a day of learning and celebrating Beaumont's future, on October 18th, 2020, the citizens of Beaumont are encouraged to show support by simply purchasing a cup of lemonade from one of the youth participating in the program to demonstrate how our community cares for the future youth, future of our youth, and for Beaumont's youngest entrepreneurs. And whereas all volunteers, organizers, participants, and sponsors are commended for their dedication to this event, and best wishes are extended for successful and rewarding observance. Now, therefore, I, Becky Ames, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim Sunday, October 18th, 2020, as Lemonade Day in Beaumont, and encourage all citizens to participate. Accordingly, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed signed today, October 13th, 2020. And accepting is Krista Hunter, Executive Director of the Beaumont Chamber Foundation. Krista?
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers, for this proclamation. And we would just encourage all citizens of Beaumont and actually all of Jefferson County to go out and support our young entrepreneurs and buy lemonade on Sunday, October 18th. And you can find our map of the different locations. It'll be on our social media pages, as well as the Lemonade Day Jefferson County website.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you, and I know the kids will have a great time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our proclamations today. So if you are here for that purpose and need to lead, now is the time to do so. But of course, you're always welcome to stay. I would like to read that at the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to the deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in accordance with Section 551.072 of the Government Code to it, former fire station number one located at 747 College Street. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today on scheduled agenda items one through three or the consent agenda, the time to do so is now. If you would like to speak and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room and hand it to the city clerk at the front of the room. She will call out your name. We would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. Right now, it's for one through three or the consent agenda. However, if you're here to speak on any other item, I will open up the microphone at the end of our general business for that purpose.
We don't have any, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. There seems to be no one. I'll close the floor. Council, can I have a motion, please, on the consent agenda?
Need to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, there's a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. First item, please.
Mayor and Council, item number one is to consider a resolution approving the purchase of two vacuum trucks. One truck would be purchased for use in the Streets and Drainage Division. It would replace a 2010 model, which has exceeded its useful life. Another truck would be purchased for use in the Sewer Maintenance Division. It's a 2006 model. Total pricing in the amount of $789,832 was obtained from Freightliner of Austin through the buyboard contract. Funds were budgeted in the Capital Reserve Fund, as well as the Water Utilities Fund. For these two purchases, the administration recommends approval.
Thank you, Council. You have heard the reading of item number one. Is there a motion on this item, please?
Still moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry, I didn't get to see.
Second was Councilman Phil Schott. The motion was Taylor and Neale.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No problem. Next item, please.
Mayor and Council, item number two is to consider a resolution approving the purchase of a new construction management software solution from Systemates Incorporated. The Public Works Department does not have a project management tool to manage ongoing construction projects. All of the corresponding data is maintained inside several spreadsheets and other document types. The cost is $117,404, which includes a one-time cost of $70,101.86, and a first-year subscription cost of a little over $47,000. The, you should know, the IT department mistakenly requested $50,000 for this purchase in the budget process, which was for the projected subscription cost only. The Public Works Director, who is, of course, Bart Markowiac, he believes this purchase is very important, and if approved, he'll look for cost savings in that $13.3 million Public Works budget to offset the difference. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, Council. You have heard the reading of item number two. Is there a motion on this item?
Still moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilman Getz.
Okay, I'd like to know a little bit more about how we are currently tracking projects and deadlines and how this will change things.
Thank you. Thanks for talking to Harold for me today.
Doing a good job, Bart. Thanks.
Thanks, Bart.
So, just to run through, and I'll answer any questions over and above this, but basically, Public Works Engineering, one half is pretty much up here at City Hall, working on road projects, drainage projects, things of that nature. And then, we have engineers over at Water Sewer, working on water and sewer projects. Between the two, just at the present time, and honestly, I've probably shorted myself a little bit on this, but we have approximately 100 projects that are ongoing and just under $400 million in valuation on those projects. So it's quite a lot that we're juggling on a day-to-day basis. Currently, all the projects are managed by a combination of paper files and network folders containing CAD drawings, office documents, et cetera, that we have to go through to do that. So, you know, in assembling what we're talking about here today, then I had to sit, you know, three, four, five people digging through to make sure that we accounted for everything that we were handling at the present time. So the management of the projects involve generating monthly pay requests, change orders, requests for information, both from contractors and from citizens, correspondence with those contractors and citizens, submittals from the contractors, daily inspection reports, other inspections, project pictures, tracking weather delays, et cetera. So a rough estimate from my guys is we spend about 25% or more of our time just managing the administration surrounding projects. So Projectmates would handle the document management. You can put the plans in from the very beginning, handle the revisions, markups, interactions back and forth to outside engineering firms. And then, once you get past the bid phase, back and forth to the actual construction firm. It'll track budgets, bids, contracts, change orders, and invoices, and I'll go into a little bit more on the pay management here in a second. On day-to-day, it'll track those requests for information, the submittals, the daily field reports. Our inspectors are out in the field doing reports now. They take pictures, and then we try to save those pictures into folders. What this will allow us to do is give mobile devices to those inspectors. They'll take the pictures of the inspections, and it'll fold right back into that project. So you can bring up Washington, and you can see everything, from design all the way through inspection, all in one place. It'll help us with capital project planning, the construction schedule management, and then we can do analytics and reporting, including the dashboard. Just a quote, one quote I pulled out, and this is for a manager of construction from Love's Travel Stops, and she's saying that what once took two hours to update information on 10 projects, they can do in less than two hours for more than 55 projects, once they were on Projectmates. They're doing nearly four times the volume while scaling staffing less than half that. So it's really, what we're looking for is more efficiency on this. Towards that, let's talk about pay applications. Currently, when we're on a project, we have to assemble a pay application by engineering and admin staff. Then that goes back to the contractor, usually by email. The contractor will review that. If there's any back and forth, there's additional correspondence. Once they're okay with it, they're going to print it, scan it, send it back. We're going to print it. Then we're going to route it across to the people who have to sign it on our side, and then we're going to run it by paper to finance for them to cut the check. This will allow us to have the contractor have a login into Projectmates. We can send the pay application through the software, notifies them. They go into the software, say they're in agreement with it, and then it routes to us, notifies us that it's at the next stage. No more paper printing, chasing those pieces. If you want to know where all the pay applications are, they're summed up in the software easily. We spend a lot of time on those. So it's a native mobile app. You can put it on Android, iPhone, iPad, et cetera. You can access it on any system and device. The software in the company's got 20-plus years of experience. If you kind of, they're out of Texas. If you flip through to the back, there's a whole ton of large companies, cities, that use the software. And just in wrapping up, we have, outside of Mali, as city engineer, we currently have 10 engineers across Public Works and Water Sewer. If I could just get 10% efficiency savings, that would equate to having basically another engineer on staff. If I got 20%, that'd be two more engineers on staff. That's not even counting the inspectors or anybody else using the software. So that's, that's why we're angling to get this, so we can work more efficiently. Yes, sir?
This sounds intriguing, and I'm always, for promoting efficiency, a question I have is whether or not this would allow additional transparency for the public. Would the public be able to access this to look at an engineering project where it is and track it, or is this just for an house?
I don't know that there's a public portal, but we can produce reports out of this, for sure, and post those, if you'd like, via PDF.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do the public request payment information at this time?
We do get some of those from the public. We get a lot from contractors. Every time we put a bid out, we get a slew of requests for information on the bid sheets, who bid what. There's generally probably anywhere from four to 10 or more RFI's off every single project.
Thank you.
I got a question.
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned that pay applications are currently being assembled by the city's engineering and admin staff. Shouldn't that be done by the contractor?
It's in conjunction with them, but it actually gets generated on our side first, and we review it, and then it gets sent to them to make sure they're in agreement on the large projects.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Council? Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we had a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Mayor and Council, item number three is an ordinance in Mayor Council, item number three is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the certified tax roll summary for the tax year 2020 fiscal year 2021, providing for severability and providing a full repeal. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, Council. You've heard the reading of number three. May I have a motion on this, please?
Move to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And I don't need to have a record vote, right?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously, and that concludes our general business. So I will now open up the microphone for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today and haven't already done so, as I mentioned earlier, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room and hand it to the city clerk at the front of the room. She will call out your name, and again, we would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. There's no one that wants to speak? I'll close the floor, and I'll move to council member comments, and I'll start with you, Councilman Getz, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the last week, two weeks, I've had several constituents from not just my ward, but others as well, contact me about discolored water. I've communicated this to the city manager, and he has requested that I meet with Mike Harris, and I plan on doing so and trying to get some answers to some of these questions. I know this year's been challenging in a lot of ways, but, you know, to these citizens that continue to experience this, this just, this one more challenge on top of everything else. Sometimes it turns out that the problem is, is the property owners, and, you know, when that's the situation, then the property owner needs to address it. But if it's a city situation, then, you know, the city needs to address it. So I'll be meeting with Mr. Harris and trying to find some answers to these questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilmember Neil.
No comment.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. As everyone knows, this week, including today, Judge Barrett is before the Senate Judiciary Committee with their confirmation hearing for the Supreme Court. I would encourage everybody to participate and to watch this hearing that's taking place, a process, a democratic process that's a part of our republic. We understand how important the appointments to the Supreme, Supreme Court are, so I would encourage everybody to participate in that process, and, and to please pray for our Senate Committee, Judge Barrett, and the entire process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Pate.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, speaking of democratic processes, we get a chance to vote. I think early voting starts today. I would encourage everybody to get out there so you don't have to wait in line. Presidential elections tend to draw a much larger crowd, and it's important, regardless of who you're supporting, that you get out and vote. There are a lot of people sacrificed so that you could have that right, because there are countries out there where people don't get that. So just kind of keep in mind, every time you show up, that it's a, it's a sacred right and a responsibility as a citizen. We want to thank our city employees and energy for the great job they did with the last hurricane. Some, I saw somebody posted, please cancel my subscription to the Hurricane of the Month Club, because it seemed like every time we turned around, there was something else headed our direction. We're just about out of it. November the first ends hurricane season, so hopefully, this last one will be the last one we'll see. I also want to say something about a longtime friend of mine who passed away, Art Hanson. I look around the room, some of you aren't old enough to remember Get Down Brown, or the Red Carpet Inn, or the Coaching Horses Club, where Art used to play music and play trivia. Art's been around a long time, and did a whole lot to help promote a lot of local artists, and was real involved in the entertainment side of our community. And if you knew Art, he was a unique guy, to say the least. Lastly, last week, I mentioned a situation that I was going through, is it related to prostate cancer, and also reminded everybody that it's also Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I want to thank, I mean, literally, I've gotten hundreds and hundreds of people that have called and reached out and said, "Thank you for reminding me to remind my husband to get out and take that test." And, and it's nice to know that if only one person gets in, that it was worth it. But I know for a fact that there's a lot of people that have gone and taken tests just to make sure, because when you know you can stop it, if you get to it early, the one phrase you don't want to hear is, "If we'd have known about this sooner," you never want to hear that. And with the physicians that we've got here, and, I mean, the care in southeast Texas is disproportionate to the size of this community. I mean, a lot of people aren't aware that we have PET scans and MRIs more than the country of Canada here in southeast Texas, and the physicians that we have are spectacular. Of course, you know, I always try to take the opportunity to thank my longtime friend, George Thomas and Denny Harris, because they're the two guys here locally. And for those of you that weren't aware, yes, it was the DaVinci robotic surgical procedure that we used in Houston, and I'm telling you, we just need to realize we're not here forever, and we don't, we don't want to short-circuit what could be a much longer life by not going and getting a mammogram, not going to the doctor for the appropriate test, because it, it makes a difference. And so I'll just encourage all of you to continue to do that, regardless of whether it's some month, awareness month, or something. Get on a regular schedule, go see your doctor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilmember Samuel.
Thank you, Mayor. Some gave a little, but some gave it all. This is a time that we have an opportunity to participate in the process that has made our country what it is, whatever that is, and I encourage everyone to go out and vote. Every vote matters, every vote counts. So with that, I just hope that we will continue to get to the polls. I had, as a result of a phone call this morning, there was an individual who, because of the midst of the pandemic, he decided to ride his bicycle to go vote, and when he got to the polls, he had no place to put his bike. And from that, he decided to ride to another pole, and he went to three different locations that were city facilities, and neither of them had an ability for him to park his bike. So I think, in this day, many people are riding bicycles. That is some folks' sole means of transportation. So I'd like for us to consider looking at having bike racks at city facilities to facilitate those individuals who ride bicycles where they go. I think that's a low-hanging fruit to make our city more user-friendly. Secondly, many times we don't appreciate some things until we need them. You don't appreciate, really, police until you need them. Many times you don't appreciate firefighters until you need them. So this morning, I encountered, we have individuals that are going into certain neighborhoods dumping loads of trash, and that is something that we encountered in my neighborhood this morning. A neighbor called, we, they contacted the city. The city came out to pick up the trash, but by the time the city came to pick up the trash, they had, it was three different cars coming rummaging through the trash that's on the side of the road. What was a pile of trash about four to five feet high was brought down to about two feet high, and by the time the truck came, there were still folks rummaging, and they got a little testy with the city staff who had come to pick up the trash. As they began to pick up the trash, they were moving it to other parts of the lot to prevent them from taking the trash. And I happened to get there, and I, I did attempt to make reason with them, and eventually, the police had to be called, and the police responded immediately, came out, and this is not the first time that they told me they have experiences like that. The city employees are going to do their job, but they're being stopped by individuals who have other plans and other desires. So one, I wanted to make sure that people be careful about who you approach about dumping trash, because it could present a danger to themselves in doing so. But I also wanted to make sure that you follow proper protocol. So 3-1-1 would be the place to call. If you see someone dumping trash, take a picture of the vehicle, get the license plate number. Don't approach them if you don't feel comfortable doing that. That's not, you don't dump trash. You can't demolish your house and just find a vacant lot to dump the trash. That's illegal. And if you see that being done, you need to report it, and you need to have a license plate number to report it. So if we are working hard to try and keep our community clean, and we have individuals dumping trash without permits in inappropriate places, that's counterproductive, and that's something that I don't think anyone on this council or anyone in the city wants to see done. So I, I thank the city employees for their patience. I thank them for their professionalism in how they deal with it. I thank the Beaumont Police Department for lending support to those who are, are in need, and particularly in times that emotions can tend to run high. So that was definitely appreciated. And with that, I just say thank you to all the city staff during the times I've seen folks from all the departments working hard. They've been out cutting trees out of the street. They've been tending to water issues, sanitation issues. So I think we have great employees working for the city of Beaumont, and I want to say thank you to all of those who continue to serve the city of Beaumont in that manner.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilmember Muton.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, today is the first day of early voting, asking everyone to please get out, exercise your right to vote. I was very encouraging and exciting to see a line at John's Library as early as nine o'clock this morning, and we were told that people had been in line since before the polls opened. So again, today is the first day of early voting. Please get out, exercise your right to vote. Also, we'd like to ask everyone to please get out and participate in the Hurricane Awareness Day, which will be held at Dryden in Twin City on October the fifteenth, which is Thursday. I would also like to ask everyone to please congratulate our emergency nurses. I tell you what, like Councilmember Samuel said, you don't appreciate someone until you need them, and when you need a nurse and they show up, that is very, very rewarding, and so we would truly like to send appreciation and congratulations to all of our emergency nurses that are on the front line. This week is Emergency Nurses Week, so please honor them. I would also like to give condolences to Mr. Gabriel Durso Senior, who passed and was buried on last week, also Mrs. Betty Lou Colbert-Ball, and also Mrs. Fannie Mae Muton, who was a hundred years old, who passed this past week. And on another note, would truly, truly like to thank Entergy and our city employees. We were told the storm would be probably thirty to forty mile an hour winds. There's no way to predict what will happen until it happens, and unfortunately, I think we got a little, we got, we got the, the bad end of, of this deal. It could have always been worse. Thank God it wasn't, but the devastation that we did receive, Entergy was out working immediately. I had a, I had a long, hot weekend, but Sunday, Sunday night about seven-thirty, I was on the phone, and in the middle of my sentence, I screamed because my lights came on, so I could do without the lights, but not the air. So thank you, Entergy. Thank you to all of our city workers who have been out on the ground immediately, as, as soon as they could, and you can tell the difference in our city. There are still some areas that probably do not have lights. I did get a memo. Some of the areas are due to weatherheads that are damaged, and I even took pictures and posted them, and I never post on Facebook, but I was getting so many calls asking, "Where are the electrical trucks?" So I got out, I drove around, and within five minutes, I spotted out two trucks in one area where electrical wires had burnt so bad, even the grass was burnt. So they were out there, you may not have seen them, but they were diligently working, and even on Washington Boulevard, where it had been a wooden pole for as long as I could remember, they changed it out to a metal pole. So it wasn't just take the handle, flip the switch, this was major, major work that had to be done. And thank God, I mean, to be out just for three days, two and a half days, and some people never lost electricity, never lost electricity. So for those that did have to endure it, thank God it was just for a limited time. And on my last note, one of my grandsons, I have two, and Julian, I want to tell Julian Muton Junior, happy tenth birthday. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. City manager, have anything? Ms. Reed, anything for the legal department? Okay. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming. I want to talk a little bit about Hurricane Delta and the impact and what we're doing. As other council members have stated, everyone's storm wary, including us, and I want to give a shout-out to our Emergency Operations Center again. They always do such a great job, and I get to watch that firsthand, and we, the, we have great city departments. One that I'd like to recognize, because they've done this so many times, is our Solid Waste Department. As was mentioned, I understand that they are going to be done with all of the debris pickup anticipated three weeks, and that doesn't mean they won't be passing by your house for three weeks. That means that as they, first, they had to clear the roadways, and some of that required large equipment, but after that, they worked systematically through the neighborhoods to pick out, up debris that our citizens had picked up from their yards, and you can still continue to do that and put it on the roadway, and they will be coming through all neighborhoods and picking it up over the next three weeks systematically. So hats off to our Solid Waste Department and the great job that they're doing, along with our, our streets drainage, all the departments. These storms that we've had cause, you know, a lot of work for the employees, but they're out there with smiles on their faces and getting it done, and... out there with smiles on their faces and getting it done, and I really do appreciate that, along with all the staff at the Emergency Operations Center that work very long hours as well. And we did actually get, as council members, many calls about the power being out, along with, I got a lot about why didn't we call an evacuation? And just want to remind everyone that, first of all, I mean, the situation was rough, and, but if you weren't out on the street, you really should not have been in danger. But secondly, it takes us thirty-two hours clearance time once we'd make that decision. But if you take thirty-two hours into consideration and know that we never evacuate at night, it's always at daybreak, that that usually will push it back to forty-eight hours. And then you have to take into consideration that that forty-eight hours is before the onset of tropical force winds. We're not going to put people on the streets in tropical, tropical force winds, and sometimes the tropical force winds will hit hours, just like it did this with Delta, hours in advance of the eye wall making landfall. So that could be back to seventy-two hours. We were at council last Tuesday, and on Tuesday, we really did not even believe we were going to have much from this storm. And then we ended up in some places having seventy mile-an-hour wind gusts. So those that wrote to me and asked why we didn't do a voluntary evacuation, you're always welcome to voluntary evacuate. We don't have to tell you to do that if you don't feel comfortable when a storm is coming. But we ask that you pay attention to the weather because of what I just said. Again, it's, we have a thirty-two hour firm clearance rate. That's what it is in the city of Beaumont, has been for a long time. And then if we push it back to daybreak, that adds more onto it, forty-eight. And then you've got to take into consideration the onset of the tropical force winds and when that's going to happen. And like I said, just like Delta, we started getting those winds hours before the eye of the storm hit land, and that's typical. So I think that under the circumstances, we felt it fared exceptionally well. I understand from the city manager that we had very little damage, and our city buildings had some, but not a lot, mostly trees down, fences down, that kind of thing. But just wanted to talk a little bit about that. And I don't, I've been here a long time, and I don't ever remember us having a storm in October. I thought when Laura hit, we were done. I truly did. I think we all did. Usually, they're in September, and, you know, it's, it's, it's tough days in the city when you have COVID-19 and you have to deal with two storms right back to back. So hats off to all those involved and everyone that contributed to our success in making it through this storm with very little, if any, loss of human life. So wanted to make that, make that announcement. Also, we are still getting positive tests for COVID-19, not as many that, we did have one day that we had twenty-seven, which was up from where we have been. We've been running below ten, sometimes in the low teens. So we are monitoring that, and just to let the council know, I am also continuing to talk to the hospitals and the physicians about where we are in our hospital systems. I know that one of our hospitals doubled the COVID cases overnight, over the weekend, but we also had a lot of testing going on, so we're taking that into consideration, but they're telling me that they're okay for right now. Entergy, I have to say that, and a lot of the council members made this comment, we were kept very much up to date by Entergy through Delta, from phone calls every night at six o'clock to emails. And I don't know if anyone realized, but at one time, all but about six thousand of Beaumont residents were out of power, were without power. I think this is, as of this morning, eighty-five percent of the customers are back online. There are sixteen thousand customers remaining without power. That's not all within the city of Beaumont, that's our area. There was a hundred and nine thousand out at the peak of the storm, and ninety-two thousand have been restored. They do expect that all remaining will be on by tomorrow, Wednesday. So if you don't have power yet, I'm so sorry to hear that. I know how difficult it is. I've been there myself. But Entergy is working to get that restored. And certainly, last but not least, last week, we had a, we had a work session with the council, and we talked about many items. A big topic of conversation was our homeless population, and there was three council members that volunteered to continue on a committee that was formed when Councilmember Pate and Councilmember Gatz were going to meetings, and now I believe Councilmember Mouton wants to be involved, too. So we're going to pull that committee back together, and it'll be the mayor's task force for the homeless. So with that said, y'all are all still willing to do that? Yes? Okay. All right, so we'll talk afterwards, but we'll just need to, we'll need to post those meetings in case other council members want to go and, and put a, if we could put a, a schedule out of when the meetings will be. Okay? All right. That's all I have. I don't believe we have anything else that I've forgotten. We do have an executive session today. Thank y'all for coming. We will now recess into executive session.